Good afternoon. Welcome to the school committee meeting of Friday, March 29, 2019. First item on the agenda, minutes. So we have minutes from Thursday, March 7, 2019. Do we have any questions or comments? No? Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Great. Now we have an executive session set of minutes from Friday, February 15, 2019. So we can't discuss, but if anyone wants these held for any reason. Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve but not release. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay. Okay, Ms. Boney?
We did it all last night.
Next item, foreign travel proposal. Dr. Cabral.
Thank you. So the Chair of the World Language Department, Maria Palma, is here today. She's presenting a proposal for a trip for OA foreign language teacher, Patrick Sharkey, to go to Martinique with some French students next on the April vacation of 2020. She'll talk about the cost of the trip, the itinerary, and your packet, and answer any questions that you may have.
So, thank you for having me again. We have a new trip proposed for next year, so as Dr. Cabral said, it is for the island of Martinique, which is a French island, French-only in the Caribbean. And Mr. Sharkey decided to go with the same travel company. He has used before for on by Proventur, and we've had wonderful experiences with them. They've done everything A to Z. They're very, very reliable and really take care of the students and provide a wonderful experience. So he decided to do something a little different. I think, you know, he and I were talking about where we teach in the upper levels in history and culture of the countries that speak the languages we teach. And there's a lot to be learned about, the whole process of colonization of the Americas. And I think that this historical and cultural context is going to be really the big takeaway from this trip. It's a different experience than the home state of France on the mainland, but it has very much an educational takeaway as well. It has a native speaker component, too. They'll be visiting a French school, a Martinique school, and, you know, mixing with the local youth and getting to know them personally as well. So there is that component. But they definitely, you know, for example, visiting a slavery museum, they're going to be learning a much different side of history, really learning about the colonization. You know, all of the Americas have that common story, and so I think that that'll be a big historical takeaway for the students, where we do, you know, in my Spanish five class, we touch on that as well in other Latin American countries. So that'll be one of the big takeaways from that. He'll have his French five students, so those are a really great motivated group of students. The cost of the trip, where it's at eight days, is a little bit lower than other trips we've had. So it's at $3,200, which is, I mean, nothing's cheap, but it was definitely, I know it's a more affordable one than some of the other trips have been in the past, where it's at eight days and maybe not quite as far as kind of overseas completely. So I think it'll be a manageable expense for the interested students. And like I said, it's with Proventur again. And Mr. Sharkey will be the chaperone, if you use the moment to say, having more than 15 students going, so I think he will be the one in OA plus the four guys for Proventur.
If I have anything, if I'm missing anything that may be necessary.
When the students come back, they always speak to their French classes and the other French classes as well. They show slide shows and share photos and really compare and contrast the American school with their experience in the school in various countries, so they'll be doing the same as well, returning to their French classes and sharing with the other students.
Any questions?
So I have a comment and a question. First of all, I love the idea of this trip because it's a little bit out of the ordinary in terms of what we need to really do with our students. And so I'm a big supporter of new and creative places to take our kids and show them the world, so I appreciate that component. I have a question, probably not directly for you, but a larger question about when kids are traveling. So when kids are traveling, if it's a student who's on any kind of medication, can you tell me what the policy is or the plan is around that? I don't know if it's different when we travel in the United States versus traveling overseas and this, you know, tied to our conversation last night about the increase in mental health problems with kids. I'm really thinking about that. And what should happen if a kid, I guess, any kind of medical emergency, but particularly what if there's a mental health crisis?
Right, I know, these are wonderful questions and they're very, you know, relevant. So with the travel company, Proventur, the students ahead of time get their families fill out an online profile, and they provide all things medically related that would be necessary, for example, allergies, medication. Then according to TSA regulations, they pack their medication appropriately and bring them with them and are responsible for it. And this is all ahead of time. This is all worked through with the parents, and, you know, everybody is on board and on the same page as to what this child is taking, for what reason. It's confidential, but only the, you know, important people, necessary people, know it. And so therefore, it has never been a problem that I've known of in my experience, which is great, but we do ahead of time take care of that. As well, if there ever were to be an issue, Mr. Sharkey's will figure it out the entire time, as well as the Proventur guide, who they have all resources available to be able to help the student.
And so out of curiosity, Dr. Cabral, is it a similar policy when a student's traveling when they're busy in the United States?
It is, but they don't always have a tour guide with them, depending on what the trip is. Sometimes it's the teachers and the chaperones that are with them. However, we do have the resources of the district to rely upon, so they always call back to the district. We have people who are available all hours, any day of the week. But then also, what they would do, if they're in this country, they would do what we do here when there aren't enough mental health providers available, and they call, literally call emergency services and have the appropriate professionals on hand to help the student.
And so if a student is on medication, are they responsible? Is there, you know, when they're little, they go off and there's somebody who goes off with them and handles it, but when you hit high school?
Typically, so we can't ask every child to tell us every medication, because they're going on a trip.
Right.
Because there are hipof violations to that. And we are, there's an assumption that at high school in particular, they are self-administered of their own medication. However, of course, if they need assistance, that's what the teachers are there for. If there is a particular concern, we have always had a parent go with them. The parents typically want to go, especially a young child on insulin, for example. If a parent can't go, we send a substitute nurse on the trip. We don't typically have that issue with the high schoolers, again, because they tend to be at an age where they self-administer. But you had brought up the example of the youngster on all of our field trips. There either needs to be someone there to administer the medication, whether that's the parent, or if not, we send a substitute nurse with them.
Okay. Thank you.
As well, in our pre-departure and earlier interest meetings, we talked about that, you know, say, to the parents, if your child does take medication, you know, that's a conversation you should have with them as to their being able to be responsible for it on the trip, so that the families do think about it ahead of time, because we make sure to cover that.
Right.
So everybody's on the same page with it. So.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Would somebody like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the World Language Department upper level French class trip to Martinique in the spring of 2020. Second.
All in favor? Thank you for coming in.
Thank you as always.
Thank you, Ms. Palma.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Next item, discussion impossible vote to approve Press Box sponsorship. Dr. Cabral?
Mr. Murray is here from Friends of Easton. As you know, they're working very hard to raise the funds necessary for the replacement of the turf field. And so he is respectfully requesting that you review his submissions for the sponsors of the Press Box sign, and he may, I believe, has some other advertising that he would like to run by you to make sure that they are in accordance with the ethics and values of the Easton Public Schools, so that he can move ahead with securing those donations.
Ms. Murray?
Thank you. Good afternoon. To give you an update, we first started by clarifying the disposition of the Press Box, which is currently, Evolution signage on it. As you know, Evolution is no longer known by the owner, who put that in at the time. And we received an agreement that that signage would be removed. We then sought a sponsor, and we're fortunate to have found a sponsor in the Dana Barrows Basketball Center. They made a pledged donation of $50,000 toward our effort, which is a significant part of what we're trying to do. We feel that Dana Barrows Basketball Center is certainly a benign and appropriate spot to put that, and so we would respectfully request your approval of that particular sponsorship. I can give you the second one. Earlier this week, we were surprised, in a very positive way, we had made a request to the Board at Harbor One for a sponsorship, which we believe to be in the range of $10,000. The board meeting was early this week. We have a member of our committee, Katie Kelly, who works at Harbor One and worked hard, and the board approved a sponsorship of $25,000.
Oh, wow.
So Harbor One, again, I think is, if you're, we're talking about something like that, again, I think benign and, you know, W. B. Mason, Harbor One, so we think it's also appropriate.
Where did that go?
That is a perimeter fence sign. So all we had, all we were offering were, you know, key sponsorship was the Press Box. The other sponsorships are on the perimeter fence, and we made it clear in our website and what we got approved, I think, from you folks before we did that, but that anybody that was willing to make a sponsorship, that that would be submitted to your review and approval.
Okay.
What would, on the Dana Barrows project, so these three, how's it going to look around the Press Box?
You know, honestly, I don't think we're that far along with them.
Okay, I was just curious.
Conceptually, we want to know that it was okay, and then we'll engage their marketing folks to decide what they want to do. We'll give you.
I just was curious.
We'll give you a rendering, you know, let be a rendering done by some marketing folks, and we'll make sure that you see that, so you can see actually how it's going to look. We can do that on all the, you know, all the signs. I think what we're looking for now is a conceptual approval. We'll go back and engage the marketing groups of these companies, and then come back to you with, let's say, proofs of what the signs are going to look like.
Sure.
Now, Harbor One, you know, we were, the W. B. Mason sign that's there for your reference is a four-foot by eight-foot sign that takes up essentially one panel of the fence. That was paid for over a 10-year, $2,500 donation privately made by one of the owners at W. B. Mason. And so that was a, so the Harbor One is actually, we were looking for $10,000 for a panel, and they paid more than twice that. So whether that means a second panel, we'll speak to them about what they're.
Okay, just in terms of comparability?
Sure, yeah, I think we're just trying to be fair.
Right. Questions, comments?
Is the W. B. Mason sponsorship continuing? Or is that now ended?
Yeah, well, they've paid, they've paid $25,000 over the last decade, I think. Hard to tell when to take it down right now.
No, I just, you said for 10 years, I didn't know if that is next year or not last year.
They've got five years in their life.
So when you do this, it's usually, you give them a timeframe?
Yes.
How long?
Yeah, yeah. The sponsorship on the Press Box is a 10-year, that's the, you know, we're trying to cycle it up with the field. I don't expect to be back here in decades speaking to you about that, to be honest with you.
Never know.
This is my second decade. So that's where we're at. I would also appreciate an opportunity, I'm happy to wait until the public comment section to maybe update you on a couple of other things relative to the project.
Sure. All right, so let's start with this. As for the Dana Barrows sponsorship, would somebody want to make a motion concerning that?
I'd make a motion to accept the Dana Barrows Basketball Club sponsorship of $50,000 for the Press Box at OA.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, and what, a motion for the Harbor One?
Is that, that's definite? Harbor One is definite?
Approved by the board.
Right. Okay. So I'll move to accept the Harbor One sponsorship of $25,000 and approve your fence sign, probably double panel.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? So if you don't mind reading from the public comment, what can you do now?
We can say what?
I'm happy to.
All right.
I'm happy to.
First of all, congratulations on the sponsorship, so it's really amazing.
That's unbelievable.
Yeah, that's unbelievable.
I know, good at math.
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion to move public, yeah, we're going to add a public comment to the next item on the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay.
Thank you. And I sent maybe a phone when I got here, and I want to preface my remarks by telling you that I have the utmost respect for what you folks do. And I told Dr. Cabral in private meetings that I have personal reasons for staying involved in this as long as I have, and those are, it's very simple to explain. I had two kids who went through the system, who had amazing experience, and I have a sense of gratitude to the schools that we sent, and I'm playing it out. And I may, I may call it even after this, but I'm still working to pay some back. The things I'd like to talk to you about are three things. First of all, there is, like most things in Easton, some opposition to what we're trying to do. There is opposition primarily in the social media world, where the rules are a little bit different. It doesn't have to be true, you just have to be willing to say it. We have asked for and received for a formal statement from Activitas relative to field safety, which talks in general about their experience, their installations, studies that are existing on the issue. They cite eight or 10 numbers at the end about studies that conclude that there's no harm or risk. And we had submitted that to the school committee for your review and approval. I committed to Dr. Cabral, we understand that the issue of safety is an important one to this board. We don't want, Friends of Easton, that is, speak on your behalf in that regard. It's your risk, not mine. I understand that. But we would like to put up a statement that at least allows people in Easton who are interested to read something that's factual and provided by our experts.
Put that up on the Friends of Easton website?
Yes, yes.
Have we seen it yet?
Some.
Did you provide it? I don't know if I've got it. Have you sent it today?
I provided.
On Wednesday.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
We were inundated.
Look, you don't have to, you don't have to tell them.
I've learned more about chrome rubber than I ever thought possible. What is it in the pixel, like?
No, I mean, just to give you a sense, and, look, I, you know, what we're doing means something to me, and I certainly wouldn't do it if I thought there was any risk whatsoever. The article du jour yesterday posted said, "Does artificial turf give more than 200 players cancer?" That's what went out, okay? Now, of course, 99% of people are going to look at the title of that, that perfectly suits the agenda. But if you're willing to read five paragraphs, the short story is, if you want some context, is there was an assistant coach in Washington State that made an accusation that 53 of her soccer players had contracted cancer based on playing on the turf field. That happened in 2014. The situation had really died out, even from when we did it the first time around. This ignited, that accusation, like most things in the world we live in, caught fire and went through the internet like crazy, okay? The subsequent study that was done by the University of Washington, cited in the article, says that after comparing the cancer rate among soccer players on Griffin's list to Washington's cancer rate among residents of similar age, they concluded it was actually less than what they expected. So in essence, they said that the players, that the number of players that she reported had cancer was less than the average cancer rate of people that age in the state of Washington. So basically, they said, "You're wrong." Now, the "you're wrong" part doesn't get the headlines or the internet exposure, but that's what's in the article, okay? So all I'm saying is that we're, you know, I call it misinformation, you know? I think there's posts that say there's "Research shows that young athletes have gotten cancer from constant digging up of toxic chemicals while playing on turf. Schools don't seem to care, though." To me, I find that, especially what I saw last night, what you're trying to do, the budget constraints you're faced with, the notion that our school system or any school system would turn a blind eye to something that would cause their kids to be sick, to me, that's out of bounds, completely appalling. So I say that not to create drama, but to say, we are not going to engage, I'm not going to engage in fight back on every post that's out there, but I would like to put a piece of factual documentation out there that says, "We hired an expert, and this is what they said."
So the Friends of Easton page has nothing to do with the schools?
It's simply a fundraising.
Fundraising.
But that is addressed to us, correct?
Yes. We asked it that to be. I mean, if you're like activists, but look.
But could activists do the same letter and say, "To the Friends of Easton"?
I'm sure they would. I'm walking a fine line here, right? I'm trying to raise money to support your project. And honestly, if Bill Matthews was here, he'd be probably sitting in my seat talking, right? And I don't mean to, I think the world, and I would not, not trying to talk on his behalf.
No, I know.
But, you know, what I'm saying is before a misinformation campaign, we've had a few of those in town, you know, sways people that will only look at the tertiary, you know, sort of the top-line stuff, and we like to do that. Now, so that's sort of my first issue. If you want Activitas, if you want to read the letter and tell me that Activitas can write it to Friends of Easton, that's fine.
I mean, I don't know how everyone feels, but I feel like what you put on your page is, I mean, as long as it's not, if it's addressed to you and your group, and it's from, I mean, I don't know.
Well, I think, to give you a quick background, where this came from, you know, when we started out on the project, or I should say later than that, I had a meeting with Dr. Cabral, and we were conscientious, or let's say conscious of the fact that if we would make statements pertaining to the safety of the field, that, hey, if you don't replace it, the field's going to be dangerous, for us to make statements like that, which is not the case. If the field, if we deem the field is, you know, reached a hardness level, they'll take it out of service. You're not going to play a damaged field.
Of course.
We don't want to make statements, right, that someone's going to come back and use that and create any kind of liability for the school system. So we were very careful not to make statements about safety. And what I told Dr. Cabral was that anything relative to safety, anything pertaining to safety, I'd review with her first, so that we don't purport to speak on behalf of the school committee with regard to the issue of safety.
First of all, let me say, I actually had read that article, and I was very much persuaded by that article, that a lot of these concerns were overblown, because that's not the only article that talks about, you know, state public health facilities doing studies that found cancer rates to be the same or lower as people in that age group. I mean, as much as we all are horrified and we look for every reason possible, when a young child is diagnosed with cancer and we want to blame something, it just turns out that there is no evidence that the cancer rates are greater for kids who play regularly on chrome rubber fields than they would, you know, playing on natural fields, or not knowing at all. So that, I think that is compelling. But if you put that article up the way it is, people are still just going to see that headline, so I don't know how you.
No, no, no. I want to put up a statement.
The letter that Activitas wrote.
I want to put up a statement from Activitas that in essence says that we're an independent landscape architect and civil engineering firm, that we have 10 years' experience, that because of concern raised in the relative to this Washington state, we want to make the following statement. They work, they say 100 scientific peer-reviewed published studies have performed well-bide. They say that none of those have drawn any conclusion that there's that risk, and then they cite, as I said, eight or 10 studies where they specifically put language in, where the studies conclude that there is no risk.
That's public record. It's been sent to us, it's public record. If it's public record, you can put it up, right? Is that right?
Yeah, I mean, it's public record. Then John could question it.
Right. You know, I mean, it's.
Okay, but as it pertains to the safety issue, I understand it with Dr. Cabral, and I didn't want to proceed without that word. Okay.
Can I?
Sure.
So I just want to clarify and make sure that I understood something last evening, because I think I did, but maybe I didn't. It sounded to me last night, kind of in bits and pieces that I picked up from David Twongley when he was speaking, and from a couple of the representatives of Activitas, that during the process that this group was involved in looking at the design and where are we going, that there was actually consideration of organic turf.
Sure.
That you looked at it as one of the options. You evaluated its pros and cons as one of the options, and you decided, based on these circumstances, that it wasn't the option that you wanted to move forward. I want to make sure I understand that correctly.
Sure.
Because I think it's important for people to understand that you didn't just jump to chrome, you didn't just start your process assuming chrome rubber. You started your process by saying, "What's going to be the best design solution for this particular installation?"
Sure. And I appreciate you asking that. And honestly, last night was a tough night. I was, I spent most of the night trying to figure out where I should have intervened last night. I didn't want to come off as being, once you had decided to pursue the, I made the decision to pursue, you know, look at ultimate influence, I didn't want to be perceived as argumentative. I did participate in every meeting, the conference room beside the athletic director at the high school. We brought in, at Cool High School, and we, Activitas brought in a series of turf vendors and infill vendors. We talked to a number of people that told us about, you know, different types of synthetic turf. You can get, you know, stuff that is a hybrid that has, I'm not going to give you all that, but there's a dozen different types of turf, this field turf, this, you know, there's brand names. Everyone's got their own types of turf. We probably spoke to three or four of them. We spoke to people who have different types of infill, including organic infill, okay? And what we learned back then, and, you know, having, look, I'm not foremost expert, but I was involved 10 years ago when all the arguments were, I'm super understanding and sensitive about the fact that there was a safety concern back then. And we asked all the science in 10 years, they said, "Not a single study, nothing." In fact, hundreds of studies had said it's safe. The information that we got relative to the organic was exactly what we heard last night. Now, I've asked, this is my second point, I've asked, well, we've asked Activitas to come back and give us the incremental cost to put 100% organic infill there, okay? That is probably just, we have a memo from them dated the 8th of March, 6th of March, where they're, so they're, you know, they list three or four of them, their round numbers were between $90,000 and $160,000. Beyond that, they confirmed again today that irrigation systems required. Now, I'm not sure how you feel, I don't really want to go over the town and tell them we got to water our artificial turf. I think that's not an argument that I'm too excited to make, but you need it for that. There's also a requirement to top up, or let's say, more technical terms, to add a quarter inch of top infill every two years. You know, I have listened to.
And that information that came directly from people, companies that do organic, I just want to make sure.
Yes, and from Activitas.
Between this and purpose.
If you do that, you're going to have to pay $90,000 or $160,000 more. You're going to have to pay to add organic material, because it breaks down. Every two years, you got to put something on top, and you got to put an irrigation system, and you got to have someone who's almost full-time maintenance who's watching this thing night and day, to make sure the moisture level's fine, to make sure the G-max is fine, to make sure it's distributed properly. And if you sat in a meeting knowing, you know, eight months ago, said, "We're going to go to the town with something that is more expensive with no," and say, "What?" I mean, to the point I tried to make last night, and say, "We have a safe one," and what, a more safe one? I mean, you know, there was, we didn't want to do that. And to go to the town and say, "We think we want to do this, we got to, every two years, we're going to need some more money, we're going to need a full-time person who's going to look at this, we're going to have an irrigation system," so the decision was made last, you know, six or eight months ago. Now, we're going to have those numbers, hopefully by the early part of next week. And I think it's not unimportant to mention that, you know, there's somehow, you know, you say organic, and everyone just assumes safety, okay? The discussion I had with the team after the meeting last night is this organic material is coming from someplace in Indonesia. is this organic material is coming from someplace in Indonesia. The processing techniques that they use are largely unknown. The studies that have been done on organic material versus the chrome rubber are minimal. So, it's not a question, so, you know, you're going from something that is, you know, that people want to suspect, and there's no information, to something that there's, I mean, there's no information corroborating a risk, to something where there's maybe no information at all, right? And there was a suggestion made that we should put the organic over the chrome rubber. And he said, "No, we'd be the first people on earth to do that." I don't think we're interested in plowing new snow either.
Yeah.
So, look, I think you, look, you asked for it, and we owe it to you. And I don't resent the request at all. And we'll try to provide the information in a way that you can convey to the public. The last point I want to raise is that based on that body of work that was done six or eight months ago, where we had vendors in and Activitas making recommendations about options that we could provide, and what the cost of the various options and sub-layer versus, you know, and knowing that there was some folks that were concerned about what the cost of this was going to be, more than some folks maybe. We got to a budget that was $815,000. That budget consists of a number of line items, which are largely in place right now. The $380,000 we presented, prepared a presentation, went, spoke with a member of the Activitas team who was there last night to the CPA committee, and received approval for $380,000. There's a $50,000 line item, which is the Athletic Revolving Fund. There's $185,000 in town capital, which I know is painful, not yet approved, and pending town meeting, as is the CPA funds. And there's $200,000 in private fundraising, which we have every expectation that we're going to raise.
Can I ask you a question?
Certainly.
When you went to CPA to explain this process or to ask for the funding, did you talk to them about the infill you were using? So, they, okay?
Sure. And there was, look, there was some, I think only one member asked some questions and was, had some reservations about the fact that it was going to be recycled, the consular units, which to me was not a logical conclusion. And the board voted, we found out the next day that the board had voted to approve. And now, of course, that's subject to town. So, and as I said, the $200,000 private fundraising, you know, we're, you know, we have, you know, I mean, we need, you know, we need people to continue to help us. But we're probably, as we sit here today, better than 75% of the way there.
It's amazing. It's great.
And I have every confidence going to get there. My problem starts when, if you tell me we need $90,000 more or $160,000 more for organic infill plus a, plus an irrigation system, plus funding for every two years to fund the infill that has to put on top, plus the funding for the maintenance of the field in light of what the superintendent said last night about how the DPW is taxed. One of the things we did six or seven years ago, we were paying $5,500 a year, Friends of Easton was paying $5,500 a year to have field turf come out and do the G-max testing and maintenance. And we worked out a training program for our DPW and saved $5,500 a year so we could make that happen internally. So, I don't think the town would be receptive to a plan that says that we need to come up with money every two years, and we need a near-full-time person that's going to make sure this thing is irrigated and distributed and so forth. So, I'm not sure, given the timeframe, that there's a funding source available that would comprehend the additional monies that we're talking about. So, there's a financial reality. And there's a timing reality, you know, too. I thought the gentleman from Activitas gave a very smart answer last night, you know, as to whether the, you know, can the field be used in the fall? It's, he said it would require aggressive maintenance, right? So, basically, it's G-max testing. It's not, it just goes and looks at it and says it's no good. It's just determine what the hardness of the field is.
That's what the G-max is?
G-max testing essentially is dropping a weight from a certain height, a pre-described height. It's a, and verifying, you know, what the weight does when it hits the ground, determines what the hardness of the field is.
Okay.
Okay? And there's certain specifications, okay? Beyond which, the field is deemed to be, let's say, unplanned, when it would be taken out of service. So, it's not a subjective thing. It's not by looking, you know, we know that areas around lacrosse nets and so forth take more wear than some of the other areas. But it's a question where there's an objective, scientific test that everybody in the turf industry knows what it is, that we would, so it's not a question of someone makes a decision. It's faded, it's, or even it's, look, we've done, by all accounts, a great job in getting, you know, every ounce of life out of the field that we can. So, I don't think anyone's going to tell you that the field is unplayable in the fall, but no one's going to guarantee you that it's good for three months or six months or nine. It's what the science tells us when the testing is made. So, it's not my call.
Yeah. Well, thank you for explaining that.
This is really, I mean, very helpful. And I, just in relation to what you were saying about the natural fill infill coming from Indonesia, I mean, in this country and everywhere else, we have talc, which is a natural material. And now, there really is evidence that that causes cancer. But this is natural material. Just because something's natural doesn't mean that it automatically could, with sufficient exposure, create problems for certain people. So, you know, this difference between chrome rubber and whatever the corknut or whatever. We don't know. I mean, corknut's been used for, what, five minutes? So, we don't even know whether there could be some long-term effects that no one has imagined yet, so.
I thought, honestly, I, you know, I was, I was in the meeting last night with some apprehensions. I do all public discussions, to be honest with you, especially having scenes, you know, and I'm not on social media. The real reason I know it's going on is because someone is telling me I'm just not living the network. But I thought the testimony or the presentation by the toxicologist was compelling. And the notion that we could actually find a toxicologist who personally made tests on chrome rubber, not just telling us, "I read some studies, I did this. She had interest, she had sun. She made a test, she explained it." I thought, I mean, I have a mechanical engineering background, but for me, it was technically very clear what she did. The most conservative thing, use an acid to pull the chemicals out to make the most conservative assumptions on ingestion, on mud, you know, absorption through skin. I don't think she could have done a more compelling job of describing it. And it was...
You know, assuming that it was going to be attached to the child for 12 hours a day.
And, look, so, what happens, when the message doesn't suit, then we need to find a way to malign the messenger. Now, we need to tell them that she works for turf companies and the rest of that stuff. Look, I understand, and I'm not, everyone should have their say. It's fine, okay? But fact, there's facts, and there's allegations. And I think, for lots of reasons, that go far beyond turf, that we'd be better off if we worked with facts.
Absolutely.
You understand our position, though, is that we're responsible to the public, and certainly, parents are a very important stakeholder for the school community. So, we need to be responsive, we need to be transparent, and we need to sometimes take longer than, on the face of it, appears would be necessary, so.
Look, I've said it before, you know, I pop into the public eye once a decade, which is probably too much for me, honestly. And the fact that you folks do this week in, week out, I have nothing but respect and admiration for every one of you. I'm sure that the salary that you get, it's purely a...
Michelle's going, "Wow, here's a wow." How could you all make? How could you all make?
James' math skills. We're getting 100%.
In the interest of full disclosure, I have a daughter that works for you. And I know very well that the teachers do it because they love the kids. I know that very well. So, that's my piece. I probably talked too long and taken a lot of your time.
No, I appreciate the dishonourment.
But I appreciate the opportunity.
So, we'll wait for the information.
So, April 4th, the information would be available?
I'm pushing the folks at Activitas. I don't think it's difficult. I'm trying to, you know, I've asked for just what I said. I want the price of the, the incremental price for the organic infill. I want the capital cost of disposing the entire amount of chrome rubber, which we...
That was a good point. I didn't think about that.
I want to know the cost and frequency to top-up the organic fill every two years. I want the cost of the irrigation setting. I want the frequency of anticipated maintenance, either hours per day or hours per week year-round to maintain that organic fill. I ask them for a list of any special grooming or equipment that we need that's specific to the organic fill. I ask for any information or statement regarding, any information or statement regarding the lack of information pertaining to the safety or origin of the organic.
That's, I think that last piece, whatever information is out there about the safety of that fill compared to, because I think that's what people are... Now, I suspect that all of this information may not change anyone's minds, but I do think it's important that we can show evidence that we've done that.
Yeah, I agree. And the last thing I'll say, I thought that, you know, Mr. Maguire from Activitas, I thought he was, I thought he handled things very well last night. I would be disappointed if we elected to proceed in a direction where, in which the experts that we hired has specifically recommended that we don't. I think that would be a hard... If that doesn't work out, that is not a good spot to be.
I agree.
So, again, I've taken too much of your time, and I've messed up your agenda.
That's okay. I think we'll get over it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Letting your post be copied to me?
Sure. I hope you know what I said.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you very much for your fundraising and for the process.
That's all for what you do. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, so, discussion of possible vote to approve fundraising policy JJE third reading.
Thanks for your time.
So, based on our comments last time, this was updated, so we can go through that.
Do you have a little bit of a chance? Yeah, we're going to go into business policy right now.
Absolutely.
Which you guys threw.
Isn't that fun? Actually, it's fun. Okay, so, do you want to just go through and look at the changes? See if everyone's okay with it?
I think that's an exact...
And then you'll see a couple bullet points down on the second page. That's where we, where we added C-Policy KHC.
I love it.
Everyone else okay with JJE? Okay, should we make a motion to approve?
Motion to approve new policy JJE.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Great, so, review distribution posting of promotional materials policy KHC, first reading.
You guys, by the way, did a lovely job on the sender that we borrowed some, you know, sort of formatting and ideas from other districts, which the key is to find what fits with our district.
Very good. I guess my question is, is this going to be the help that, is this going to be what you asked us for?
I think this is extremely helpful. We can send this, when anyone asks us for a request, we can send them the policy so they can self-edit first. The only question that I had was number three on the back for procedures. This is very clear about all of the, that the superintendent designate me would approve all of these. The criteria is very helpful. It all makes sense. Obviously, there's some decision-making. That's fine. On number three, though, it says, "The posting of flyers to promote activities, events, or fundraisers may be allowed in individual schools at the discretion of the principal." I don't, I don't know if that sort of reneges everything before.
There's a little bit of confusion.
Well, and we were. I didn't know if you meant the posting of flyers to promote school or district activity. I didn't know if that's what you meant. Because if the, you know, Cub Scouts wanted to post in a school, it sounds like the school can just post it.
Yeah. No, you're right.
School or district activities. So, it's a, "The posting of flyers to promote school or district activities, events, or fundraisers may be allowed in individual schools at the discretion of the building principal."
Well, wait a minute, though. Something that's allowing district activity, though presumably will have been pre-approved by the superintendent designate me. Is that still clear? I mean, if somebody came and said, "I want to do this fundraiser for the district, and I'm coming to you because you're my child's principal, will you post, you know, will you distribute this?" But maybe it had, because I could have missed that.
The way I was interpreting this was that if the school, Richardson Olmsted School, or a stipended club were doing something, or an elementary school that Richardson Olmsted wanted to put in their school, that's it. If it's a booster club, even though it's school-related, that falls under the first part. This is simply a school club or a class.
Like the, that, but they do that wrong thing, you know? Yeah. So, so the posting of flyers to promote school...
Booster them.
School, school-specific or school? In other words, what you're saying.
That's what my question was. I'm not sure how.
Well, and I think we did this because we thought, okay, so let's say, let's say somebody has gone through all of this stuff to make up a flyer that we're going to put out in a newsletter. And then, so the flyer's been approved, the, you know, it went out in the newsletter, and somebody says, "Can I put this up in the school? Can I put this up?" We, because it was in a school, we weren't sure. If the flyer had already been approved...
Okay, so you're, so this is...
I think that's how we meant it.
So, you're saying pre-approved?
So, maybe you should say something like, "The posting of flyers approved in item number two."
Pre-approved flyers.
We, or within the school, because if Richardson Olmsted is doing something
They should be able to.
In their school, they should, if the high school, like, I shouldn't have to approve.
No, that, and that's why.
The high school's French club doing something.
Right, and that's why this.
So that's what I meant by a school-specific, school-sponsored activity, not a PAC, not a booster, school-sponsored activity, but if it's, you know, fundraiser by an organization even affiliated with the school.
It needs to go through that process.
Then it can be pre-approved and posted, that's fine. Just has to make those things.
Yeah, exactly.
Is that what you were saying, is what I'm asking?
I actually think, I think what we were saying was the second, but I think you're pointing out that the first should also be included, it's important. In other words, we were saying, we, I think we were assuming that it had already gone through the process. It already had been approved, it had the disclaimer, and it went out in the newsletter, and then somebody said, "Oh, by the way, is it okay if I put this sign up in your school?" We wanted to give that authority to the principal, rather than have to go back to Chrissy and say.
Because the biggest gray area, I think, and this is why I'm bringing it up, the biggest gray area was what's considered a school event.
Right.
If a Boy Scout is an Eagle Scout and he goes to the school, is that considered a school event? If he's a Boy Scout and he wants to do something for the school, is that considered a school? If it's a, if it's a, if it's an organization that wants to raise money for the school, is that a school event? They were all sort of becoming school events.
Yeah, no, they're not. So, I think we could maybe add, there's really two pieces to this, which is the posting, so let's just say it, we'd say the posting of pre-approved flyers, 'cause that's one component, right? Approved flyers, to promote, we're just gonna leave it, "Activities for now, events or fundraisers may be allowed in individual schools at the discretion of the building principal." In addition, something like,
School-specific, I think you said?
Yep, school-specific flyers for school-specific events, or how do you say it?
The thing is, you wanna make sure it's not just, as Alicia pointed out, it's not just some, you know, group comes in and says, "You know what, my kid went to Richardson Olmsted five years ago, I wanna raise money." That is not, so we need to find a way that it's clear, essentially initiate.
A school-sponsored.
School-sponsored.
School-sponsored event?
Yes. In addition, flyers for school-sponsored events?
Yeah.
Well, it'd be, it would be essentially events, activities, or fundraisers sponsored by individual schools. It's really by this, or by.
It's sponsored by the school.
Absolutely.
So flyers for events.
So, so in addition, flyers for individual events, activities.
Well, I'd say, events, activities, or fundraisers sponsored by individual schools would, would be allowed at the discretion of those, that school from those.
Individual school, you could say, "And individual school." Start at the beginning.
Okay, in addition, activities, events, or fundraisers sponsored by an individual school will be allowed in that school at the discretion of the building.
But isn't that same person, it's just it?
Not really, not really, 'cause the other is pre-approved by the, by number one. No, I, I probably just botched this, so we should start over, but, in other words, we have one category, which is large, you know, just sort of general events that could apply to the school, the district, whatever, or associated in some way, that have already been approved by the superintendent or designate me. But there may be other things that are just being done in the school that, you know,
Like if the PTA or the PAC. If Chris is, I wouldn't even, I'd be careful about PTA, I don't know. If Chris says, "We're gonna do today's, you know, dress silly day, let's put flyers up." Absolutely.
Or even, they, they all do, you know, fundraisers for Easter food main drives. It's, but it's school-sponsored, the school is doing it.
Right.
Okay, so, in addition, flyers, right, we had to put in flyers.
Oh, flyers promoting, or.
Or information promoting, is that what you're saying?
Yep.
Activities and fundraisers. For promoting. Sponsored by.
Activities, events, or fundraisers, which are, which are a school-sponsored event, which are a school-sponsored, right.
So activities or fundraisers for school-sponsored events. No, that's not right, 'cause it's kind of a, because we mean activities and fundraisers.
Sponsored by.
Sponsored by an individual school.
Sponsored by an individual school.
May be allowed. At the building principal. Is that?
At the discretion of the.
I just distracted Lynn, I'm sorry. Can you see that, please?
Yep, so, in addition, information promoting events, activities, or fundraisers sponsored by an individual school may be allowed at the discretion of the building principal.
That's all okay?
Exactly.
Could you repeat that one more time?
Yep, in addition,
Information.
Information promoting events, activities, or fundraisers sponsored by an individual school may be allowed at the discretion of the building principal.
Thank you.
In that building.
In other words, well, I'm serious.
So you wanna put parentheses, "In that building"?
Well, the building principal isn't gonna, I, I mean, I think we can assume the building principal.
Chris isn't gonna ask.
Say, "Go put this up in my school."
Yeah. I didn't know how specific we needed to be. What about district events, like, you might?
But that's what, that was.
District.
That's pre-approved.
That's addressed, yes, that's pre-approved. I'll, I'll, I'll approve that.
Thanks.
No, no, listen, I think you should give it a little more thought.
Okay, so we will.
Thank you.
What is it?
That guidance is important. We will have Rebecca review it, as always.
Yep, and then we'll have a second reading and.
But really nice. And just remember that until, because JJE needs reference to this one, it needs to get approved.
So if she, depending on Rebecca's schedule, I mean, if we could get this at the next April 4th meeting? If not, we have one of the 12.
She's working on a couple of things, so, but we'll ask. She's going to be here on Tuesday. Let's make sure to ask her.
And then if not, we have one of the 12, we'll have two numbers missing, but we'll have three to go and approve the column.
This is to be, in fact, immediately?
The JJ.
The JJ, yeah.
Yeah.
Could we just?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
But KHC is not.
No, we have to do a second reading and it has to be a review vote by Rebecca, yeah.
Second reading, vote, and then Rebecca.
Uh, okay, next item, fiscal year 19 quarterly budget review, Dr. Ceballos.
Marilyn Gordon is here to update you on the status of the FY19 budget and answer any questions you have. We'll send some documents around the table.
Do you wanna start with a little?
I'm sorry?
Do you wanna start with a little?
Thank you.
I also brought the, the book of revolving accounts.
Oh, thank you.
So excited.
Well, if you haven't seen it yet. Don't get too excited.
Okay, so, the big legal size paper is the, this is the 1819 budget. I just, I just updated, I, I had done it as of the 15th, and then this morning I updated it through the 22nd, so I forgot to change the title of the document. So this is through March 22nd. And just going through the columns, the budget, the adjusted budget, expenses that we've had through March 22nd, and then encumbered, which are things that have already been,
Assigned.
Assigned, right, that, that we're just waiting for the invoices to come in, or as far as salaries go, if they're, you know, we would encumber somebody's salary for the rest of the year. So that gives you the balance. And then, the columns to the right, estimating for the end of the year, we have the substitutes, 'cause we don't know who the substitutes are, so we have substitutes and ancillary staff, which would be like coaches, any type, any kind of like overtime, what else is in that column?
Contractors?
Home.
Contractors?
No, that would be in the expenses. This would just be staff, like, people that are on the payroll, anybody that would be paid through payroll. Then the 1% column is anybody that has not settled, any unions that have not settled yet to do the retros. So, 'cause we've only done teachers so far, so from the, that's the difference between the last one that I gave you, and this one, if you looked at the one I gave you the last time, it had all the teachers on there, 'cause we hadn't done them. Now that the teacher's contract has settled, and we've given them their retro pay, so they're not in that column anymore.
Okay.
We just have the other unions that are left. And then the expenses through the rest of the year, assuming that, in that middle section there, from between 2410 and 2453, right there, that section, that's like, those are the school department's budgets, that's assuming that the schools are going to spend all the money that they have, you know, for the different departments.
So, I'm sorry, can I ask? So, in 2375 PD stipends and expenses, your last, there's no balance in the last column.
Right, because it's assuming that it's gonna be completely spent.
Zero, okay, but there's no negative balance. But no negative balance either, so it's really a zero.
No, I'm assuming they're gonna spend every cent that's in that budget, which the 43,000 is the mentor stipends and the curriculum leaders, and the 48,000 would be tuition reimbursement, workshops.
Yep.
That type of thing.
And, yeah, and so I just wanna highlight that those are the types of expenses, as one-time expenses, that as we get a little bit closer to the end of the year, if we have to put a freeze on that in order to, you can see here, it says we're, we're behind $130,000. It's still a little bit too early, but if we get to a point where we find that we, we need to hold off on materials, that's obviously the plan for something like that. So even though it looks scary and it's not great to be $130,000 in the red, we do have that option. It won't have a ton of money left over, we just obviously wanna make it neutral. The other thing I wanna point out is that, again, I, I have to highlight how appreciative I am to Marilyn for adding these three projected columns. Even in just this instance, you'll see that if these weren't here, I'm sure it probably was in Marilyn's hedge, you do all this very easily, but in terms of reporting it out to you, we, that's a combined $1.5 million that would look as though it was in the bottom line still, and that can be deceiving to the public who may not understand how to read this, and that we do have the rest of the year to go, and we have expenses. So, so I'm very appreciative of that, in terms of reporting it out to other people. I know it's an extra step that, you know, Marilyn's office doesn't need to do in order to know what's remaining, but for reporting purposes, it's really, really helpful.
And we also, this is the first year we've actually encumbered the utilities, which has been working out really well, too.
Yeah. So when I had looked, I think back at Januaries, remember I said last night, 'cause I only had as of January, the three that I was, that, like, I was going, "Oh my word," were utilities, facilities, and the out-of-district stuff, was in January, or December, I think that, our last one was December or January. Yeah, December, whenever.
I think it's January.
That was the one that I went, those were, were, but it looks like, even though the utilities are still negative, they're not.
But, you can see the heat has a little money left, the electricity's a little over, it's kinda worked itself out.
Maintenance?
Well, maintenance is, that's a problem.
Maintenance is a big problem. It's very hard to predict, almost every day, something is coming up that's an issue, like, this morning, there, there's something every day, and that's just gonna continue to get worse.
And this isn't, it says includes roof, that's not the roof project, it's something else, right?
Just roof repairs.
Oh, because we had a leak in Richardson, right?
The high school had some.
The center school.
Yeah, you have to remember too, that those schools are aging, and so they are regular repairs, just like on your home. The other thing, I do wanna point this out for context, not to alarm you, however, if you look on the first page, 2305 Classroom Teachers, you see the amount, it looks like we're in the plus there, okay? That's because of staff changes or degree changes, that's because of retirements. And then you look on the back, page 2310, you see a similar amount for Special Education Teachers and Specialists. That is something that helps us traditionally, because if you look down to the last thing on that page, you see that tuition to out-of-district is over by $332,000. That would have been, that would have made this $130,000, almost, almost half a million dollars, if that money weren't there. Okay, what that money is, is the rollover. So if a, if a person retires last year, when Marilyn did the rollover to this year, if they were making $80,000, she rolled over $80,000. However, because we knew the fiscal climate this year, we, we do that because we know things like out-of-district tuition can change on the dime, and facilities, like it is, this is just longitudinal. We keep adding incrementally every year, but there's only so much we can add, because we only have a certain percentage from the town. That's not gonna be there next year.
I was gonna say, that changes from year to year.
No, it's only, it's only there. In order to make the cuts this year, when we rolled over staff, we took a staff member who was making $80,000 and rolled them over this year at $50,000. Because, and even with that, because we were hoping that would close the gap, but even doing that, we had to do all the cuts we've seen so many times in the presentation, and actually get to the point where we laid off staff.
Can I back off?
So that won't be there next year.
I'm not sure that I understood, yeah. When you said you took a staff person last year who was making $80,000 and rolled them over at $50,000, you only did that if they were gonna retire.
For the retire, people retired.
That's, that was the end of that.
Because the assumption is we hired a lot of staff.
Thank you.
Meaning from last year to this year.
Right, now, the reason we would do that in, in the past is not to have extra money hanging around, it is for these totally unexpected expenses, and it usually works out about even, like it did this year.
And not knowing what you're gonna hire the person at, because always get a great person, that the principal.
I was just gonna say. It's supply and demand.
Right.
If we have a mental health professional that's qualified, and they are at a higher rate than $50,000, which is possible, we don't have a choice. If we need a physics teacher, those are very hard to find. So that, we would always try to go back and, and then what would happen is we'd hire a, you know, third grade teacher at a much lower rate, and try to balance it out. We didn't use this to pad anybody's salary, it usually balanced out. We have none of those options for next year. So that's just important to keep in mind, because when we say we're, we're nervous about the budget, it's not because we had to cut so much only, it's because we wouldn't have even cut those things if we hadn't taken all of these out first.
You've taken out all the things.
We've taken out everything. We even moved things over to the revolving account, which Marilyn will explain in a second. We really exhausted every single possible thing we could. Now, some of these things happen behind the scenes, we reduce things, so it's been getting closer. This is not a one-year thing, and we've been saying it for several, several years. My predecessors said the same thing. It's been slowly, slowly getting to this point, so that we could not get to the point where it affects students and staff. However, last year was the first year it affects staff considerably, this is the second year it's affecting staff, and of course, as a direct result, students considerably. But that, it's just an important thing to keep in mind, because if, if, I'm not really sure how that's gonna work out next year, to be honest with you. We could be doing a supplies free and frees enough.
So we prepaid.
It could be.
The prepaid.
And this special education cost, by the way, was putting $2 million aside for out-of-district costs, prepaying $400,000, and we're still over at this point in the year, which could even change before the end of the year, by $332,000.
So special education costs have far almost $3 million a year.
Correct, they're over $3 million.
Oh, yeah.
Out of district.
Out of district.
Just out of districts, over $3 million. Because you have, you have circuit breakers.
If we didn't have those programs in place, there are more students that leave, have been out of district.
So, it's not a big amount of money, but I'm just curious, so under the legal services, you say there's an increase in, in special ed arbitration?
Yep.
Do we assume that this is a trend that's going to be continuing, assuming that our children are, I mean, is there?
Well, it's both things, it's, there was an increase.
There was a percentage increase to the retainer.
Right.
And we had a couple of high-level special education cases, that's not included in our retainer. So when there's arbitration or litigation, and the attorneys are involved, they charge us, like an attorney charges by the.
But, and I just, I wondered if there's ever a correlation with the fact that as, as students with those kinds of needs tend to increase in the district, I, I don't know.
It depends, a, a lot of those cases come when there's a disagreement about placement with the parent, when the parent believes a certain placement is warranted and the district does not, and so there's, there's an arbitration to help us determine what the, the best route is, things like that. So certainly, if you increase the percentage of students and parents in that pool, theoretically, you're increasing the percentage of times that there will be a disagreement associated with the services. Again, something we can't really.
There have been years that we haven't spent any money for that.
Well, I do think that, frankly, because of the, the threats really at the federal level, that I find that parents of children with special needs are kind of on the alert and concerned because of the reduction in support at the federal level for any kind of special education costs, and of course, when people become sort of frightened that maybe the benefits that, or the services their child receives could be reduced, they become maybe a little more assertive in terms of trying to get things in place right away that they wouldn't necessarily have felt the need to do earlier, and I do think that this is partly a result of a sort of federal level. I mean, I, I have no problem saying to publicly, we have the worst Department of Education secretary in history, I think, in my personal opinion, and she just wants to destroy.
Everything.
Everything, but she has now really targeted special education in a, just a, a really egregious, outrageous.
Unconscionable.
Yeah, just unconscionable, yeah.
Well, and, and also in, in that is our healthcare system. When more premiums are becoming more expensive, the, the burden on the families are becoming more expensive, they're turning to the schools to fund some of these placements that may be not appropriate, or perhaps in the past, if the parents disagreed, they would just fund it themselves. Whereas now, that's not really feasible anymore, and so that has compounded the problem as well.
I'm gonna ask, so, 'cause you mentioned it, so, 130, have we applied circuit breaker to these costs yet?
Oh, oh, so, those are automatic, some of the tuitions we automatically charge off.
This is our cost. This is our cost.
Okay, so this, my, what we're saying, what we're saying is, this doesn't even really capture the full cost of special ed because what you, what you, what we cost out through the circuit breaker is not even in the spreadsheet.
Right.
And also, I know the answer to this question is yes, but also what we cost out through our federal grants is not.
Right, and I didn't bring those today.
That's okay.
I brought the regular revolving, but I, the grants, which I consider circuit breaker, it is in that, it's considered a grant.
It's, so, so really, to capture the full cost of special education, you need to take all of this and add in our circuit breaker, add in all of federal grants, and that will give you an idea of what this district is funding.
Well, this is the cost to us.
Right.
I, if you're talking about the total cost, that is correct.
But if those federal grants or that circuit breaker changes, our loss to us.
That is also correct, yeah. The people transportation on the first page, thirty-three hundred?
That is general ed transportation.
That's general ed?
So we did have an increase to the contract that was not budgeted. And we also have the McKinney-Vento, which is the homeless transportation, which is also in that line.
That has never been an actual, uh, line item, excuse me, or added because it had been historically a rather low line. But the numbers have just increased so much. McKinney-Vento is the homeless student, that we are required to transport them from wherever they might be living. And that is extremely expensive. So now we are actually.
Right, because we're, we're spending about seventy thousand dollars a year for that now, and we, we're spending nothing for that.
Yeah, so that really crept up on us very quickly. Um, we, we no longer can absorb it in other lines. And so now we're adding it as a line number and just subtracting it from other lines as an assumption going forward because it's just been consistent over the last couple of years.
So I'm actually, has, has there been any change in that whole, kind of the definitions involved with the McKinney-Vento Act? Because, um, I can remember years and years ago, you know, we talked about where the, the district that was responsible for child was where that child laid his head. I mean, that was literally the, the definition. Now, I know it's, but now, if a child becomes homeless, my question is, how are they determining that the child is truly homeless? If the child has moved in with a grandparent two communities away, is that truly homelessness? Or is that a situation where the district, the new district, where the child is literally living? I mean, they're not living in a shelter usually in these circumstances.
That's not the definition. The, no, the definition is not living in a shelter. Definition is you do not, they don't have their own address. So, and then their responsibility is the last district they attended school.
And it's not just that they don't have their own address, I have to think, because I know what you're thinking is, it's, they had one and they lost it, so now they're someplace new.
Right.
Well, they obviously have an address, though, if they're getting. But it's different, they didn't, they lost it, they lost their own address.
Except they don't have a, a, a bed to sleep.
Yeah, and it's not where they lay their head, that's the residency.
Yeah.
And now that's actually been augmented to be where, what is the center of their social experience? So if they are, for example, living, you know, we have a child, I have them three days a week, you have them four days a week, but they're in all comrak and girl scouts and everything in the town that I'm in, it's where their social circle is.
That's interesting, so that is a change in, no, I just wondered, I just remember that sort of.
That's not homelessness, that's right.
Yes, yes.
No, homelessness is if they, and so we, they're living with someone, yes.
I mean, there's, there's definitely a kind of overlap, though, in terms of the residency and homelessness issue in this case because, you know, if they've moved in for three years with their cousin, are they really homeless? I mean, do we have to continue for three years to transport them to the eastern public schools, even if they're living for three years in another town with a relative, say?
The only, the only thing is that if they are switching to another school, so for example, second to third grade, um, there's been some changes in the law. So there was the law that said that they continued on the same track, but now when they are switching to another school, that is the time that they can then attend the school where they are now.
Okay, so it's not for twelve, I mean, they could, first grade.
For example, three, yeah.
But we don't, if they move in first grade, we don't have to keep them through high school, in other words. Okay, I, no, I wondered if, that just seemed sort of insane if it was indefinite, you know? But, okay. I said it last night, next year is, I'm sure you're panicked.
Why are you panicked? Sure. You didn't sense that in the last couple of presentations? Okay, okay, that's okay, as long as it's come across now, that's fine.
No, we, we, no, believe me, we, we sit around and wring our hands off regularly. And have for years wringed.
But this is, this is the worst.
This is the worst.
This is the worst.
It's the worst since I've been here.
Getting, getting that message out, because I think in our heads, we're like, it's zooming around, our hearts are beating, we're, you know, we're panicking over this, but it's hard to get that out to parents and let them really understand what's going on, because there's a lot of, it's a lot of information and it's hard to.
It's, it's also, I, I don't know how you get to really absorb the information because as one of you pointed out, as we were leaving last night, almost everyone who was there about their concerns, many kind of misguided about the turf situation, left. Were not interested in staying for the budget. And, you know, I've been on social media today and kind of watching what parents are saying. They're all talking about the turf, even the people who stayed for the budget. Nobody's saying it's a darn thing.
We have regressive budgets.
Terrible, you know, we have a budget that's going to affect the future of our children, nothing.
And we haven't received one.
It's like, I saw this article about the turf from, you know, San Diego, and I need to post this and, and, you know. It's quite my opinions about, so.
It's, it's, from, from a strictly management perspective, there's a delicate balancing act as well. Because sometimes, you know, you get to a point, we have to maintain morale. We have to maintain confidence in the system. We have to maintain that this is an attractive community for families to move into while we're sharing this accurate information.
Right.
That's very difficult to do.
Sure. Even, I, I, I want to say, and I think it is fortunate, even when the, when we hit the recession, and we made some hard choices then, but there was all the jobs, there was all, there was money from our, the American Relief Recovery Act that really helped. I don't, I, I mean, I would say that during that time, we held steady. No, did we move forward? No, probably not. But we were able to pretty, I would say, in balance, hold steady.
Which is infinitely better than every other district.
Exactly, exactly. But this, this doesn't even feel like holding steady to me.
Well, it's regressive.
Right. I know.
Now, you want to look at the.
Yep, the revolving accounts, okay. So these are our revolving accounts, um. Can, do you want me to go through each, go through each one?
Do you, do you need me to read you her writing? I'm used to it now. No, do you need to write it? Just say my shirt, okay? No, that's good.
I can tell you what each, do you want to know what each one is?
I'll find out.
Or do you know, or they self-explain it to her?
Just maybe the, the ones that sort of revolve.
Right, so custodial revolving really should say, the reason it's called that is because we pay custodial overtime out of that, it's always been called that, but it really is facility rentals. And, um, that's where, you know, that's where the money comes from, to do our repairs that we don't have in the budget, which, that's what my writing says, we will be using all of this from line twenty because if we don't have any place to go in the budget when we have these unforeseen repairs, then this is where we're going.
And you can, so, when, when I alluded last night, when I made the reference, that we took a hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of our budget for next year to try to make the gap close, we put it here. So you can see, that's most of this money. Well, that's, that'll work for next year.
Yeah, but not after.
But then what? So that's, I just wanted to punctuate that point. That is not a, we're not okay with facilities because of that.
The athletic, there are, there's actually two athletic accounts. So there's this one, which is from the gate receipts, and then on the, um, then if you, not the next page, but the page after that, there's the user fees. So, um, I'm not sure which one we're going to take that out of, whether it's this one or the other one.
Do we pay details out of one of these? What do we pay details out of?
We pay details out of the budget.
Really?
How come I thought, how come I thought police came out of the, how come I thought the details came out of?
Well, I'm going to, I am taking some of the over, we did reduce the athletic budget because we're moving stuff into the revolving account because we, because we increased the fees. So maybe because.
I don't know, I just always in my head had the idea that we paid, yeah, that we, we paid details out of the operating budget.
We do.
Okay.
We do. But some of the athletic, if you look at the budget, you'll see the athletic, um, is going to go over. And one of, when we look at the end, how we end up in the year, so that's on the top. The first line on the second page. So, so that twenty-four thousand, that's, that budget is over, can come out of.
You'll move it, you'll move.
I can move, so I'm going to get, wait till we get a little closer, and then that would be one of the things that I would move.
Yeah.
Which is really what we would prefer to use it for, is when we have difficulty like that, not to count on it as our operating facilities, for example. So that's facility rental, that's fields and buildings, right?
Yes, it's everything combined. I know, I meant to ask David about that thing, because they talked about that last night, about the field rental.
Where do we make more money?
Oh, the auditorium.
It's not fields.
The auditorium is what makes the money. Um, yeah, I, I don't, I don't even know how many times we rent out the field.
Well, in fact, when they were talking about how hot it is in the summer, they don't, they don't even use it in the summer. I mean, football starts, but just like Bill said, they're very, very careful about not going out when it's the hot, when it's hot like that. Uh, I don't think it's rented to anybody else. I, I mean, we could check, but.
Oh, yes.
We really don't rent, it's really not.
Top one or anymore, but didn't they used to use that every Sunday?
In August, in the summer?
Whenever they start.
I don't think they'll have their kids on that field in the summer.
I don't know when they play, or fall, or the fall, but I don't know, I don't know what the deal is with that.
Really, football, yeah, and youthful volumes.
I don't know, look at that.
Okay, we can check, but we certainly wouldn't put our kids out there, that it would be dangerous.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, it's okay.
Um, okay, so we'll go to that page.
Mm-hmm. Um, yeah, oh, can you talk about kindergarten?
Yeah.
Yes.
So kindergarten, um, right now, so we charge any kindergarten teacher that is a full-time kindergarten teacher, we charge half of their pay to the kindergarten revolving account and half of their pay to the budget. And then we have one paraprofessional for every two, every, for every two classes.
Which is already understaffed.
Right, and all of those paraprofessionals come out of the kindergarten tuition. So right now, with that, which has been the practice, that is what we've been doing, with that, we are, our expenses are currently more than the revenue. Now, we have some old money in there that we're starting to use up, but this is not, this is, so, this is, we, we can go like a couple of years and then, then we're going to have to either raise tuition or we're going to have to move people into the budget, unless we have some significant retirement rollovers that bring the salaries down, so we'll have to look at that.
So what, what are the expenses? Is it just the pay is higher than they?
Than the tuition.
Yeah.
Because we haven't raised the tuition and the teachers still keep getting big.
But we have the high, we have, we're in the highest tuition bracket in the state.
We can't go all the way. We want to go down.
We already have the lowest, you know, in the population, we have the lowest percentage of the cohort of kids who are unfolding in the garden, so we don't want to discourage people from sending their children.
Okay. Oh, that's what I, I asked David about that, the McKinney-Vento, doubling up.
Oh, I actually, I have the definition here.
Doubling up, because I'm like, what is that?
It's children unused who are sharing the housing of other persons due to loss of housing, economic hardship, or a similar reason. And then there's, are living in motels, hotels, but that's the portion about the doubling up.
Doubling up, that's, I knew, I knew it was a term.
I mean, that part, I mean, I understand that they're in the hotels and shelters and things like that, but.
But if somebody moves in with their grandparents because of a hardship, that is considered homeless.
And that has happened.
Yeah.
Yes. Um, so then, I, I, I just started breaking out the deposits for next year because I really want to get a clean, um.
Right.
I want to get a clean, you know, view of what, how much money that one year is, when we're ending up in that one year.
Do we ever have situations where, um, people just don't pay the tuition?
We, uh, we've had a few, but, uh, we're really good at.
We work with them, we come up with payment plans, we do everything we can.
We've even had people pay, like, we don't stop either when the year is, you know, it, it's really, like, maybe one or two people. It's, 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 the collections are excellent.
Are we still using that collection agency that we voted on last year?
No, that company folded. Or sold to somebody else.
And we've been investigating other companies and so far, we haven't found a good one because of the wording, or, or, you would have had to have them accept, I, I don't, accept certain.
We haven't found a PR firm.
Yeah.
We don't have a PR firm, the police do.
No, well, we, we are, we also do.
We, the same one?
Yes.
Okay. Well, kind of, I mean, we have a small portion, right? Of this.
Well, we don't have like a full.
We find it ourselves, though, right?
Yeah, we don't like own the firm, but we.
No, no, I'm.
Just like any other customer, they have.
It's not like the full-time sort of.
No.
I'm just curious, though.
It's a contract, just like everybody else has with that.
But if people haven't paid the kindergarten, we'll, you know, they'll continue even when the child's in first grade or, you know, to, still, don't stop.
Mm-hmm.
Still. But most of the people that have hardship, usually have hardship because they end up on assistance or something. And then if they do go on assistance, then we'll, we'll waive it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, the sped revolving is a combination of the preschool tuitions and the, um, tuition from the three kids that we have in, from Milis, that are in the, that are in the high school program. So, um, and, and there is, there is some, some money in here, but, um, you know, if that out of district.
Yeah. But we don't, I doubt we're going to be able to prepay this year.
Right.
So we may need to take tuitions from this.
Would you prepay them still or just wait till next year?
No, we would just.
You can move this roll forward.
Oh, this roll, so you, so you, you'd just, you'd just use this.
But we'd have to use more of this if we can't prepay, or all of it, plus.
And right now, the, uh, the two, there's two salaries that come out of that, the, um, the early childhood coordinator and one special ed teacher. And those two salaries were a little bit more than what we brought in for the preschool tuitions. And, um, you, you, you did vote to do that new tuition schedule for the preschool for next year? So I'm not sure how much that's also going to have an impact on this.
Okay.
Okay, um, the next is that elected bus, that's the.
Yeah.
So we're, we're charging the middle school late bus there. So it, it's, that's a wash for, for the year, but we do have some old money in there from some years when we didn't have the late bus, you know, uh, the late bus was funded elsewhere.
Yeah.
So, um, that is where, this is the money that if, depending on how the year ends up, that, you know, that page one that you were talking about here, that's over.
Yeah.
The page, so I would be, where I wrote in there green that some of this could come from the paid ride. So if we get in trouble closing out this year, I can move some of that to, to that.
But every time we do that.
No, it goes down.
But that's it, it's one, it's, it's one shot, right, it's one shot. The music, that's, that's the music revolving and the athletic, those are the student, um, fees. And, oh, I just put that, we've had some, our, that pays for all the buses, for the kids to go to all the events, and our bus bills, we're very late getting the bus bills this year. Their, their, bus company's really behind on paying, on giving us those bills.
Okay. Could we have, at another time, this would involve a larger conversation, talk a little bit about the various sources of.
Could we add, at another time, should involve a larger conversation, talk a little bit about the various sources of funds that music department has coming in, you know, everything from performances to, and then we have, of course, the building rentals, which is a separate, you know, sort of... But there are times when I've thought, it's wonderful that we have these incredible productions, and, you know, but I've actually started to ask myself, why would a school system that's limping along like this be importing choreographers from New York City? And...
Well, we don't pay that out of our budget.
Well, I know we don't.
It comes from the ticket sales, so it's sort of, that's sort of a cycle.
But where do the ticket sales, I mean, if, if the ticket sales, well, go ahead, you started out.
No, it's okay, it's just, it's sort of a cycle, so if you, if you are able to bring in that kind of a crowd, you can pay for those kinds of things. If you don't have those things, then you don't have the crowd, and then you pay for the lower level, it's, it's just, it's very...
Well, I understand that, but what I'm kinda saying is, if you can still generate the crowd, because we have some really talented choreographers, for example, that are, you know, live within the few communities around us, and don't need to have transportation expenses from New York, and don't need to be in the top tier of choreographers in the universe, so I'm just wondering, it seems like that would still make the production just as good, but...
That I don't know, we have to rely on our experts.
It's a tough, I don't know, it's a tough sell to say that people who were bringing their children to see Cinderella wouldn't have gone if we didn't have New York City choreographers coming up. So I, I just feel like there's maybe some money that we're, we're spending to make things... It's not Broadway, it's East Public Schools.
No, I completely understand what you're saying, but if we're gonna rely on that as a revenue source, we have to rely on the people to say, we're gonna do more with less, and still bring in the same revenue, and then we'll make money, otherwise we won't make money.
But I'm not talking about really doing less, I'm not talking about saying, let's not have choreographers.
I understand, I understand.
You know, but maybe we don't need to, I, I don't know, I, I know that I'm not the expert in this, and I don't really know the nitty gritty and what goes into all of this, but it just, it just has occurred to me that when I've heard about the enormous expense that is involved in producing the musical, that it's, it's hard for me to believe that the other typical high school who's also having, you know, sell-out crowds and producing very nice musicals, is necessarily bringing in... I'm using the New York City choreographers as just a sort of example of one of the things, I mean, there are other elements to this, obviously. So I just think it's something maybe we could take a look at at some point.
I totally understand, it's just, I don't know that other schools are making as much as we are on revenue. It's, I just wanna accentuate the fact that it's cost-neutral for the district, so we don't invest any of our money into that because it's no aggressive...
No, I understand it's cost-neutral.
No, I'm saying it for people who don't understand that. It's very important that we just repeat that for other people who might not understand that.
Okay, yes, you're, oh, you're right, I didn't mean to, no, I totally understand, it's paid out of the...
Yes, I just wanna make sure that's clear, when we're talking about this trouble that we're having, that we are not saying that that's so important that we're investing.
No, absolutely understand, it does not come out of budget at all, oh, yes, okay, so if I, I didn't think I was unclear, but if I was unclear, I apologize. No, I'm talking about the potential for having more funding that could then go to the music revolving account, and then we could take some of the actual programmatic needs for the department out of that, that we're now funding out of other sources, or, you know, whatever.
And I completely understand, and it could be possible. The only thing I'm offering for consideration is, that the only reason it makes that level is because the people who are doing it, once you don't offer the resources to make it like it is, those people might not do it anymore, and so while it might cost you less to do it later, it could be this level of performance and revenue, and it's still cost-neutral, and it's not as good of a program. That is possible, I'm just throwing that out there, that's possible. To presume that it would be the same level, but cost less, is a presumption, and it may or may not be accurate. There's a, there's a chance you take there. That's all.
I think it would be a great discussion, though, to bring in the music department head and go over, like, the student activity. There are lots of activities in the student activity that are music-related. The band, the base date, the musical, the music trips.
That I think is a more productive conversation.
Orchestra, it's, there's a lot of them, and just to hear, it's, I don't even know exactly what all those groups do, where they go, you know, what, so that would be it.
I just think we're at a point now where we need to start looking at everything, and we need to decide what priorities are.
Right, but all of those are, but what I'm saying is, all of those are self-sufficient. So we'd rather look at those first, and then we will also look at that, but these are, like, critical, right? So look at it right away.
So put it on the list for the right-of-way list. Add to the right-of-way list.
Okay, so there, the elementary fees, that's what we charge first through sixth graders, forty-five dollars, and it pays for the NRT sheet program and the buses to the swim lives. So we, we still have another sheet catcher program, they'll pay and we'll...
Can I just ask a question quickly, on the athletic revolving, bank fees, athletic, what is...
Oh, that's the credit card fees, because when we charge the hundred and seventy-five, it, it's a flat fee, we don't... Sometimes you go on, like, on the Unipay website, and you're paying a different bill to the town, and you have to, they add the credit card fee to your account, on this, we want, we absorb the fee, the credit card fee, because we want every person to pay with the credit card.
I remember that, thank you.
It helps them to pay, and so we're not...
Right, it's not a big amount, I'm just saying...
And that's, that's exactly what we're looking for, every little few thousand dollars in there.
It's really good for accountability, and just no cash, and it's, it's good for that. These other little, tiny little...
Not paying fees is a huge problem for us, as you can imagine.
Yes.
People not paying.
People not paying fees is a big problem.
It also takes personnel to have to go and seek them out, and...
Right. On the testing, on that page, so without using the carry-forward, so you make a certain amount on testing receipts, and then you, I imagine they pay the proctors.
Correct, and the exams, and the AP exams, we have college board.
Okay, so it just, it seems kinda weird that, you know, the kids are paying for a test that we have, we're ending up losing money on, you know what I mean?
Oh, no, no, well, but we just opened the portal for the, so the, but, so the AP exam, um...
Yeah, it's not until May, so it's not exact...
So is this expenditure from last May?
Because the testing receipts were seventy-six, and the expense was eighty-one.
Eighty-one, is that this year, last year?
I wouldn't, that, that would be, that's just from the PSATs. That would be just from, because we haven't even done the AP yet, so that would be...
Just from PSATs, I should be twice, that was what, October?
I don't know why that was a couple hundred bucks short, so I'd have to look into that.
Yeah, it's not, it just seems weird to me that your, the kids are paying for a test that we don't have enough, we're paying more to give it, I don't know.
There were fewer kids, and whatever.
I don't know.
Can we just charge them for the test, and not charge them for the proctors?
Right, oh, so we're, okay, so then that makes more sense, thank you.
Oh, yeah, we couldn't really charge the kids for...
Maybe the PSAT people should be paid for the practice.
No, we gotta look at everything, like I said.
If we didn't have to do webcast, how much more money would be in the state budget? Ten million dollars, no, not that much. That'd be a lot.
This is extra.
Any other questions, comments?
Thank you for doing this now, this is really helpful.
Yeah, thank you very much. Okay. Public comment? Superintendent notes?
I have no new developments since ten o'clock.
Assistant superintendent notes?
Well, I also do not have anything further from ten o'clock, I'll stay home.
School committee?
So can I ask the question, which is, at what point will we, I know it's, we can't do it yet, because it was just last night, it was last night, but at what point will you expect to have more information from Connor Reed, so that we can actually go back to that list and, yeah, some decisions?
He said that, so of course, I've been pushing, because we're talking about people's jobs, and we need to let them know what's happening, we don't wanna keep the people in limbo, so I, he has agreed to let me know by mid-April. So April fifteenth, I will be calling him, I don't care if that's a Sunday, or whatever day, I don't know what day of the week it is.
It's next Monday.
Okay, so, so I will be calling to hopefully get the new figure, and then we add dollar amounts to the list that we had presented last night, and see where we're at, and then you can vote on that.
So I'd like to make a little comment, which is, I love getting to say whatever I want now. She's leaving, she's leaving, and I probably won't be around for that conversation, so I'd like to, and I know it's a terrible budget year, and I understand all that. One of the conversations that we have always had as a district is the importance of keeping money as close to the kids as possible, which historically has always meant teachers. I'd like to challenge that paradigm a little bit, because I think that that's one of the reasons that this district hasn't made progress, is that we keep the money as close to the kids as possible at the expense of other things that could help move the district forward. This is just based on my, kind of, as I've seen us year to year, put things off, and not do things that we talk about as being important to help our students move forward. I'm not discounting that teachers are important, that's, I don't want anybody to misunderstand that. I just, I sometimes worry that that, let's not look at educators and, you know, cut something else, or cut, you know, we didn't work on curriculum for quite a long time, because we didn't have the resources to allow us to do that, because we didn't. We didn't, we haven't added any programs, we've talked for skill, skillions of years about languages at a lower level. I, I just, I'm just putting out that, that out there as food for thought, that if there's any way to challenge, even the tiniest, tiniest bit. It's important to think about those things, because there are resources and even positions that you could bring in that would actually benefit the entire district, or at least a whole cohort of kids at a certain, you know, three-grade level, in a way that would balance more than balance out, say, you know, switching out one teacher at a, at a level where there are already pretty good class sizes, I mean, the truth is, our class sizes, we, because our focus has been on, on keeping class sizes low, we really do have, compared to other districts when I checked, quite reasonable class sizes, and in some areas actually lower than many districts. So, but, but we don't have supports for those teachers in many cases that other districts have, really important.
Like the reading interventionists, or math interventionists, that I still don't have any of.
Which might, you know, if you, you could imagine, that potentially that could benefit more children doing a, a switch in some ways, in terms of how you, you know, what kind of personnel, what kind of resources you put in place for the broader group, it's just an idea, I mean, I see your...
And, and I do actually, to a certain extent, think that you have, did somebody just call? I was going down the stairs, I'm sorry, here was the...
Sorry, is it?
Yeah. Where was the table?
So I think to an extent you've done that for the last two years, in terms of how you frame things in the budget and the choices that you make. You know, we're choosing to add an adjustment counselor because it's really critically important, so I guess I just would want us to continue to think about that, those kinds of things.
Well, but, so that's a good example, we're eliminating a very much needed adjustment counselor proposal, because we're trying to keep everything else really steady, but I think one could make the case that that adjustment counselor, in terms of the well-being of the larger group, may be more critical than a particular class size for, particularly when you're talking at, say, the middle school, high school level, you've got many more sections of class to even out that. I don't know, I mean, obviously, we defer to
Absolutely.
our administration and our experts in terms of making these decisions. Doesn't mean that when you've been making these observations over many years about what's happening in the district, and how hard it is to make any progress at all, that we shouldn't maybe, you know, think a little differently than we always have, we've just automatically gone with that class size, class size, and keeping all the teachers in place, and I'm not sure we've entirely benefited our kids to the degree possible by not looking at some other, just around the edges, potential changes.
Well, right now, we're not doing that, right now, we are looking, and it is a balance, and we do recognize that, and we have had those conversations. I was asked by a staff member, isn't it last woman is first to go? And I made a point to explain for exactly the reasons that you said, no, that isn't the case, it depends on the needs of the children at any given time. Like last year, for example, we added mental health professionals at the expense of other things, like outsourcing the drivers, those are positions, and we did the same thing this year. There are positions that we, that we either eliminated, reduced, or eliminated due to attrition, we did all three. At the expense of adding some positions, the interventionists, the adjustment counselor, it was only when we had to cut even deeper that we then reviewed it in the same way, looked at class sizes, looked, all things considered, are pulling some of those things back, so we do, we do look at it both ways, I don't know about twenty-six years of your history here, but we definitely do take that into consideration.
And that's why I said, I know in the last two years, I know you, and I would encourage you to continue to do that, because I would, you can disagree with me, but I would say that for many years, a lot of what we talked about is the, kind of, the heading that we used when we were in tough budget years, keep the, keep the money as close to the kids as possible.
Whenever possible, and, but this is, I think this is the same philosophy, really. Maybe implemented in a different way, because we're still trying to keep it as close to the children and their current needs as possible.
I think current needs is to keep...
So now, I have no more comments.
So once we have a better idea from Connor, we can schedule another budget meeting. Okay.
My son saw the Northern Lights, he's in the, he's in Romance.
I saw the Northern Lights.
Yeah, the adventurer.
Yeah. That's awesome. Okay, anything else for school committee notes? Nope, okay, so I'm gonna make a motion to go into executive session, and we will be returning to open session for the purpose to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for the Eastern Educators Association Paraprofessional Unit and Unity, and the Southeastern Public Employees Association Custodial Unit, and in my opinion, having this discussion in public would be detrimental to the bargaining position of the school committee, do I have a second?
Second.
Hold the committee.
Torque, yes.
Wysin, yes?
Martin, yes.
Okay, thank you.